...to order on Monday, March 7th at 2022 at 7:00 PM. Members present are David Kenny, Brett and Susie. This time we move on to the pledge of allegiance and prayer by Cindy Shelton.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I just want to thank you so much for all the teachers and the students and the staff that we have at our school. And I want you to bless them so much throughout the school years that will surely come. I just want to thank you for being able to actually be in school this year and bless us with all the activities that are going on. And I just want you, I want everybody to feel the love that you have for us, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Stay at UCLA.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, at this time we move on to the approval of the minutes from the February 14, 2022 meeting.
Any changes?
No change.
Just make a motion for a break minute.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve minutes from the February 14, 2022 meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett? And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to approval of encumbrances and change orders.
Okay, if you look at the first page, look down to 346, that's Webster's Heat and Air. And that actually says removal, that's I believe the purchase of one unit. We, we have one unit. They took those down on the, what we call the fifth grade building when they're putting that roof up. And two or three of those are condensers only. Is that right? And we're gonna set, we're gonna keep those on the ground instead of building a framework and everything to put them back on the roof. And then one of them was, I'm looking in the back, maybe this guy back there, but one of them's many years old. So we're gonna go ahead and replace it while we have it down and out of service. So that's that 346, Webster's Heat and Air. 347, if you remember, we approved, I believe it was last month, CDW to purchase laptops. And 40,000 of that is purchased through E-Rate Group. So that's what that encumbrance is. 349, Brandon's Detail House, that's banners. That's to update our all-state and state championship banners in the gym. We have some updating to do there and then additional state championship banners to put up. 350, DNR Electric is Room 2 down on the south end of the high school. This where we're locating the room for the esports room. And there's just not enough amperage in that room to run that stuff. So they're gonna put a box in that room and then run the wiring and the outlets and everything we need to make that doable in that room. If you look at 351 and then skip down to 354 and 355, these are, for instance, I'm gonna take that last one, O'Reilly's Auto Parts. $5,000, what, that, these are all three examples. Last year, that would have been a $10,000 encumbrance at the beginning of the year. And we had to lend you just half that so that when we got to 50%, we would know. And we're sitting in March, we're just now having to increase that amount. So that's good news in all three of those. Stigler Home Center, Masco, which is where we get our paper towels and trash bags, things like that. We're having to get into the second half of that where we would have been last year at this point. And then, of course, O'Reilly's. Then Pitney Bowls, that is for a new postage machine located here in the superintendent's office. Second page deals with the encumbrances for payroll. And those first two, Katie Dobie and Teresa Lackey, those are, they are both National Board certified. And we, we receive that money from the federal government. And then we pay that National Board certification stipend to them yearly about this time. The third one to Latonya Goodman is, you know, we hired her as an aide last month. So that's encumbering her salary for the rest of the school year. And then the last one to Wesley Cloud, the Booster Club, they hired him the last couple of years to be a booster holder, manager, director, to kind of run that program. And if, if it's someone that's in, that is, the last person wasn't an employee. But if they're an employee, it has to run through payroll. And they pay him $2,000 to run that program. So the, the final cost is with fixed cost and everything is 2153. So after we pay this, then the Booster Club will reimburse the school that amount. And then page three is dealing with child nutrition. And these are just simply two. First one to Cisco, which is where we get most of our food products and then Highland Dairy. And this just because right now everyone's eating free and we're serving more meals. So we're having to go back and encumber more to make it through the rest of the year. And then the next page, you have two, these are change orders. So if you look at those, we can do a change order. If it goes above the PO amount, we can do that in office for up to $750. And both of these are ones where we got to that 50% mark or 50% of what the encumbrance was for last year. And we went over in O'Reilly's by $8.64. So we had to bring it tonight to okay that. And then Stigler Home Center, we went over by $2.19. So technically, we needed to bring those change orders for approval. And then on the last page, one, dealing with payroll. It's a change order dealing with payroll, and that's Lisa Guthrie. Ms. Guthrie was on her husband's insurance with the, technically state employee insurance. And it provides insurance for the spouse, so they had it through that. And then when he changed jobs, she came back on our insurance. And so that would be for the amount needed for the rest of the year. That is the change, I mean, the encumbrances and change orders for this month.
Make a motion, we approve encumbrances and change orders as presented.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny to approve the encumbrances and change orders as presented. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to other financial reports.
We'll go up here. I'll get changed around. So we'll first look at this one, we start off with each month. But just real quickly, you could see that contracted payroll here, extra payroll over time, substitutes. And one thing, I think we might have talked about last month was, we see if, you can see a couple of these months on extra. If you look at our substitute, what we're paying out in substitute cost over in the winter, really, if you look at a lot of it, has just busted our budget in that area because of COVID illness and other things. So we were at 721 as compared to this time last year, 693. So we're over 27.5 basically for the year, over 268,566. If you look down here, 230, these are, once again, our grant programs that we're on right now. That, all of these have additional personnel. So that's where that increase comes from. So here's 238,000 of it that's, that are grant people that were paid. So you can kind of do the math here and where we would be without that. And then we paid, of course, a retention stipend at the beginning of the year up here, which was about 138,000, 140,000. So you can kind of see without those things, when we lose these programs, kind of where that would take us back too. Bills, February, we were at 70,500 as compared to 59.4 last year, where you see we've been under most of the year. This year, we're over just a little bit. And for the year, we're under from last year, 323,400. So right now, we're, we're in the good $54,882.
Do you know what the difference is in that 323,000? I mean, just generally speaking, is there some big ticket items that we had last year that we didn't this year? That's put us 323,000 under?
Just, a lot of it, just kind of being able now to kind of watch what we're doing. And also last year, we, at the beginning of the year, if you'll, yeah, look right here. This is that COVID relief, getting all the PPE and everything, different water fountains and, we spent a lot of money, that incentive grant that we got that was immediate needs to deal with COVID and that kind of thing, which was kind of an anomaly. But you can see how much we spent in August that year compared to this year. So that was a big swing right off the bat. And then these down here, if you've ever looked at that, these, these are just bills or products and things we bought dealing with these grants that we've applied for and received over the last year or so. This is, we look at that each month too, each month. In the building fund, right now, we're pretty healthy on cash, 3.185 million. In the building fund, if you'll look, we, receipts, we're starting to get our act of honor for building fund, for example, Ian, 144,000. And you come down here, we were at 1.25 million. We made the first installment on the work at the middle school and high school on the roofs, which was 74.5. So right now, at the end of the month, we stand at 1.178. Then child nutrition, we're a little bit, I think we were in the 170s last month. I think we had a pretty, we had a decent little surplus this month, what we got in claims versus expenditures. And so it brought us up a little bit in that category. Just wanted to show you this one to kind of compare this year at the end of February with years past to kind of get a, we were really looking at this because we had that CD that's, that matured the first of March. And the reason we wanted to mature the first of March is because in May, instead of doing a payroll for 675,000 or around that, we're going to do one for about 1.9 because all of our 10-month employees get all three of their summer checks three days in a row in May. So we had to have that cash on hand. But we're healthy, we're doing things right. This year, at this point, just like we said, 1.18 million, I'm sorry, 3.185 million cash on hand in the bank as compared to last year, 2.8. The year before that, 1920, 2.6. And then you can see 2.6 in 18, 19, 2.5 in 17, 18 and so forth. So we were, we were happy with this to, to go ahead another six months with that CD.
Is that the CD that was over at Farmers?
Farmers.
Is that money in the back in First National?
No, it's, it's reinvested another six months. Since we're healthy, we can just go ahead and read. Now, that's the reason I brought this up. You can, the only thing I wanted to point out, really, this is redundant on some of this. Here's that CD that matured the first of March. After looking, we really made the deal, he wanted to do a year. We told him we needed, we can't bypass that big payroll and not have that available if we needed it. We're good. So we're gonna go another six months. But what we would probably like to do, we will bring that back to you, August, September, to put that up for bid again. We would like to only bid it out six months and have that agreement with the bank and then rebid it in March for 12 months. Then we could purchase the CD in March. We won't worry about it again until the next March. And that's when we need to kind of have it available if we were ever to, to get into hard times. And, go ahead.
We had talked about also the Farmers, you know, Farmers and the banks here in town having the ability to bid on it. And we had some issues with moving our accounts from First National to Farmers.
Right.
You know, is this gonna be the same? We're gonna bid it all out again for the ability to move it all this time or not?
Well, if that, if there's an appetite for that, we need to have those discussions well in advance because there's a lot of prep work that goes along with that.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about right now is that half a million in that CD. And that's the only reason I really brought this up. Now, we talked about last board meeting that this board meeting, I would, we would attempt to kind of have an estimated end of the year where we're gonna end up because that, you know, there's needs we have and some sizable needs. And so we need to know, a lot of them, we need to know now. We can't wait till June and have, have money that we can fulfill some needs. And, and it's too late because we wouldn't get an invoice in by first of July. So, and this is all fluid. It could go either way a little bit. But right now, we estimate with everything. Last year, we, we come in at about, I'm gonna say about 10.4 million in revenue. This year, with our grants and everything, 21st century and all of that coming in, we are estimating just a little bit over 11 million in revenue. Payroll, last year, this was a, right at 8.4, a little higher this year, coming in about 8.7. Estimated bills, about 1.9, just, just under 2 million. With that, that leaves about this amount right here. Now, if we look down here, bills paid as of 2/28/22. This is when we figured this. We had spent 800, 782,000 dollars on bills to that point. This we're estimating for the rest of the year. These are the things, we know we're gonna have to buy textbooks. And this is about what they, you know, we're using last year's numbers to estimate. Side orders, things that, for supplies, that kind of thing, they need. They generally, we have them start ordering them about now so they can get them back on side and get them stored for the summer. Maintenance order, these are things we're estimating, the maintenance, they're gonna need to order the rest of the year. We're getting ready to order a big shipment of paper. We usually order a big shipment every year to use throughout the season. Estimated utilities for the rest of the year. We have our insurance due, we could pay that in June. We put this in here, we have this on to approve tonight, okay? And this is, not done being presumptuous, but if we were to put this in there, that is a new route bus. Our two activity buses we bought when I was about 18, you know, we still haven't gotten. Then just miscellaneous supplies, supplies, et cetera, other things that are involved there.
Do we have an estimated time when we're gonna get those activity buses?
Next month, it's been next month.
It's been next month, but last six months.
Yeah. People, what's the last?
We'll have them by the end of the month. They're, they're getting wrapped right now.
End of March?
I didn't say which month.
He said, end of March. He said, but end of March when we could get them early.
Next month is gonna tell you, the end of April.
End of the month.
So this is our estimated expenses on bills, okay? This is what we're estimating as carryover this year only. And we, we carried over this amount from last year. So if you add this to this, you would get 2.484 million in carryover for the year, okay? Now, we're not through. Here's some things we would like to look at. We would like, right now, we have a grant that's coming up that we've been approved for, we gotta finish the paperwork to catch us up on route buses. If we could buy two, that would put us in real good shape. And we've got our two activity buses. We would put these two new yellow buses, we would put those as our third and fourth activity bus. And then we would move our current activity buses on to routes to take on where we've got some old good buses. So we're, we're looking at, we'd like to buy one more bus if we, we're in pretty good need of a diesel truck, an ag truck, a new ag truck, so that's on our list. And then this is, I had to put it in high. We really need, a principal's best friend is a good camera security system. And so we're getting bids on that. If we, if they come in right, then that would be to upgrade the camera systems throughout the district. And these are, if we, we have that carryover, we only, we have certain things we can spend it on. And so, but we would bring these things to you in the next couple of months if this holds true. So first of all, if we didn't do that, we'd come in approximately here. Now, there's some things either way that could shake that a little bit. But if we went ahead and did all three of these, then we would come in about right here, about 2.2. And that would be a $63,000 carryover. And would make, if you had that in this from last year, it'd put us at 2.2, which is still higher than we've been in a long time. So on carryover.
On every, how many grants do we ride a year?
Oh my goodness.
A bunch?
Yes. If you say, just look.
Yeah, that's what I was.
These are all grants.
Right.
I don't know how many we ride, these are all ones that we've received over the last year and a half.
Aren't those, those are, those are consistently each year, pretty much? I mean, I know we have to ride them also, we have platform and all that. But taking them, those out of the list, just ones that, you know, for like buses and all of that, how many, how many grants do we, and get?
That has, what's our success rate?
Yeah, and, and.
So you're gonna ask me to guess? I would say right now, and granted, there's, in the situation we're in, it's, they're more liberal right now.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
My goodness, I promise you, I would say, things we've applied for and what we've received, and that's a, that's a credit to Dr. Kettle. 75 to 80%
Oh wow.
Of what we've applied for.
That's awesome.
So.
That's good, that's good to know, it's good to hear. I know he's good at what he does.
So that, your top three there, your estimated revenue and your estimated payroll and estimated bills. Estimated bills you're showing there is what you're showing here at the bottom, correct? 1983.
This is what we spent so far, these are all estimates. And then if that holds true, that's that number right there. Any other questions on any of those? Okay, I'll take it to the next one.
This time we move on to public comments. Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. Comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy BED-R and one present for that information items superintendent's report.
Okay. We usually start, one of these days, I won't begin with this, but our COVID numbers, real mild, three cases out right now, positive cases at the grade school. And then at the middle school and high school, we're both zero. So, but I guess it's, maybe as long as we have some, we'll report them. Facilities, I just, work, it's just up there today at the high school. And you can kind of see the work going on at the fifth grade building. It's obvious from the road. And then they were up there, they have, the crew should be starting next week at the high school and then also at the middle school, doing the same thing. Dealing with leaks. Most of their work are in the seams where we've done annexes in the past. Ever, I mean, seems like every one of them are leaking. So a lot of the focus is there. And then that back of the library at the high school's bad. And it's a seam too, but that, that roof back there leaks everywhere. So, but they're underway on that project. We have the, the first, the list that we looked at last week. The first on that list was windows and doors at the, at those two facilities. We got the bid process underway on that. We have a pre-bid conference, which I believe it's this week, if I'm not mistaken, when that goes in the paper. It's advertised and then it'll have all this information in that advertisement. But we have a pre-bid conference on March the 24th and then bid deadlines are March the 31st. And should have bids, whether we wanna go with them or not on the, for the April board meeting. We have a little more time because this meeting's early. So we're gonna have about five weeks between now and the next board meeting, the re, next regular board meeting. And then we have, I'm gonna try to, before that April board meeting, and then we can make some decisions. But the patio out in front of the gym is coming, it is, it's terrible. And get some bids on getting that repaired. And then a couple of summer, summer projects will need to be done in summer. Whether it's this summer or not, we'll see what we come in on. We call it a man trap at the high school so that people coming in to do business at the office can't access the hallways. And we have that at both the grade school and middle school. So we'll be working on bids there. And then also, I'm gonna get bids on the high, or at the stadium at the track. And just see where we come in there. And those, those are a couple of things that we either need to address this summer or we need to wait till the following summer subsequently there. Also, we have parent teacher conferences tomorrow evening and Thursday evening from 3:30 to 6:30. We have professional slash virtual day this Friday, 8:30 to 9:30. All of our faculty will be spring testing training. So they'll be doing their training in order to do our spring testing. We're gonna have breakfast for them at 9:30 to 10:30, kind of change it up. And then 10:30 to 11:30, we have Narcon train. ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, we have Narcon training, injection or nasal spray application for persons with suspected opioid, uh, overdose, and, uh, we want our teachers and our folks to be able to apply that, and then also to educate our kids next fall and throughout the coming year on opioid problems, and to go along that fentanyl, uh, training and awareness, because our kids, they, they don't have enough awareness of that, just to be plain and simple. And, uh, that affects, uh, really good people sometimes. Um, I'll, I'll be sending out, and I, I should've had it earlier, but I'll be sending out probably this week, an email with some legislation that's out there, uh, that affects education, and, uh, just ask you guys to, uh, I've, I've talked to both Dr. Randall and Mr. Hamilton on most of those matters, but wouldn't hurt as many as could on thing, anything pertaining to vouchers, and those things that affect public education, and, uh, but I'll be sending that out to you later this week.
Okay, so, superintendent's report. Okay, comments? Everybody good? Okay, this time we move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of contracting with an auditor for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and to audit the financial activities of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, and, um, this is our, that, we're finishing up our fifth year with Kerry Patton and associates that have done our audit, uh, and we're, we are recommending that we continue with them. Uh, uh, they've had a, I guess, a hard year, uh, Mr. Patton himself, I think, uh, had heart surgery back in the winter, November, December, and along with COVID, and we were at the end of the list, uh, then, uh, they were just here this, this week, and, uh, late getting our audit done, so we'll be calling a special board meeting to take care of that later in March. But we wanna recommend, uh, to continue with them, uh, and kinda the, the rule is, we get a, uh, a list from the state auditor's office, and as long as we select someone from that list, uh, then, uh, it's fine for you to choose who you, who you would like. They've done a good job, they kinda know our strengths and weaknesses, and so we'd like to continue with them.
So, the state kinda vets all of them then, so it's kind of a pre-approved list, and I assume probably bid, or are the, are the, the rates agreed to in advance with the state, or is that a-
Right, and it's, uh, it's been, I was looking, it's been, any, the last three or four years, it's been from about seven thousand a year to about seventy-three, and that's what this contract is, seventy-three hundred dollars, and so, and that's, that's pretty consistent. And, uh, it's like a, uh, child nutrition, you deal with your food products, if you have a vendor that's on the state list, then you don't have, we don't have to do competitive bidding on this anyway, but if they're on that list, you can use them without doing the bid process, it's already been done. And so, these people are people approved by the state auditor and inspector's office, so we'd like to continue with his agency.
Make motion to you, Kerry Patton CPA for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to contract with Kerry Patton CPA for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and to audit the financial activities of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of continuing our service agreement with ADPC for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Okay, we contract with ADPC to do all of our financial accounting, uh, electronic, uh, financial accounting, the activity fund, uh, the backup for our activity fund, treasury, personnel, trends, which is a system I can go into anytime and, and deal with POs or balances, and that can, a lot of, we get a lot, all of our information that we dealt with tonight from there, and we would just like to continue that, uh, extend that contract again to ADPC.
Motion to approve the continuation of our service agreement with ADPC for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny, to continue our service agreement with ADPC for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of revision of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar.
I hope this is the last time, but, um, because we were out, uh, in the, the end of February, uh, on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, because of ice and snow, uh, of course, we have, anytime you, you change your calendar, we were out, we didn't have schools, so you, you have to vote to amend that, and then we upload that to the State Department for their record.
We're already virtual for this Friday, right?
Yes, we, we're ahead of the game, so-
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the revisions of the twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David, to, uh, make the revisions for the twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, examination of capacity and consideration of revision of the following school policy, student transfers, F E.
Okay, and there's, uh, legislation going through now to, to even change, we've been dealing with this transfer, uh, policy all year, uh, we had to have a new transfer policy in, in effect in January, uh, there's already amending that, that's what we're dealing with tonight, and we'll be dealing with it, I would say, June or July, because, uh, there, they have legislation going through to even change it more. So, one of, uh, most of it, uh, and rightfully so, they put in procedure and, and time, uh, restraints or timetables for different things for if, if, uh, transfers denied the appeal process, and you can kinda see the underlying part of that, and I can answer any questions on that part. Uh, the other part, uh, when a student first applies for a transfer, uh, that transfer can be denied based on capacity, which we've talked about that, whatever that is within our class or program, and then discipline, if they've had a lot of discipline issues, that determination can be made, or if they're chronically, have chronic attendance problems at their other school. Uh, when you take that student as a transfer, uh, this policy is, is written based on statute or what the legislation, what the legislature passed, but then the state school board gets a hold of it, and they can make, uh, state rules on that policy also. So, when you see capacity taken out on the back end, once you've accepted that student for whatever reason, then you can only, uh, revoke that for discipline or, um, attendance, thank you. Uh, you can't do it after that, you can't revoke them.
But that's after they've already transferred, right?
Right. So, if you see capacity marked through, then that's on the back end of that transfer. So, that was a, a state school board rule that they put in, and once they establish a rule, it's basically the same as the statute in, in how much stroke it has.
And that kinda makes sense, doesn't it?
Um-
Or does, am I missing something?
I'm fine with it, I mean, I'm fine with, with all of it. We, they're, they're worried that many schools are gonna set their, uh, their capacities to constrict, and, uh, right now, we don't, we don't have that, uh, we have it, because we're, we've lost revenue on, on population, uh, to this point, so, um, we won't, for capacity, we may look at those other things, but, um, it's, uh, it's not anything that's gonna work against us.
Does this affect our virtual, our virtual candy?
It would be, yeah, with any student that, that transfers in.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the examination of capacity and revision of the following school policy, student transfers, F E.
Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to accept the capacity and consideration of revisions of the following school policies, student transfers, F E. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of overnight high school band trip to Hot Springs, Arkansas in May of twenty-twenty-two, utilizing school buses for transportation.
Okay, and you have this letter, and they, they're just requesting overnight trip to Hot Springs on May, upcoming May of twenty-two, and use, uh, they have to get, if we're taking school buses across the state line, we need board permission for that, and, uh, the band, I trust them to go just about anywhere, they're pretty responsible, but they're pretty responsible in what they do, and they've proven that, so-
This is after school's out, too, isn't it?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve their overnight high school band trip to Hot Springs, Arkansas in May of twenty-two, and utilizing school buses for transportation.
I'll second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny, to approve the overnight high school band trip to Hot Springs, Arkansas in May of twenty-twenty-two, utilizing school buses for transportation. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of allowing the usage of separate school facilities to enable high school band to host a southeastern Oklahoma high school band competition on October first, twenty-twenty-two.
And I think this, anytime we can do this is great, because it's gonna bring people into the community, uh, if you've been to those, they're, they're just everywhere, brings revenue into the community, and, uh, they're just requesting to host, and I don't, since I've been here, we haven't done that, so I think it's a good deal. And, um, then I had them make sure that they talk to the Little League, 'cause, and their away games on that week, so, uh, I think we're in good shape there, so recommend to allow them to do that.
Make a motion to allow the use of high school facilities to enable high school band to host a southeastern Oklahoma high school band competition on October first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to approve and allow the usage of separate school facilities to enable high school band to host a southeastern Oklahoma high school band competition on October first, twenty-twenty-two. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration of bids for the seventy, for seventy-one passenger bus or buses.
Uh, yes, and, uh, kinda mentioned this up, up top, that, uh, we, uh, receive bids, and, uh, we would like to buy two, we're still waiting on that grant to finalize, uh, before we can present the second one, but we would like to go ahead and, uh, get this, this'll put us in really good shape, and, uh, so, and the, the, the best bid, and the cheapest bid, was Hope Trucking Centers, which is formerly Summit Bus, so, uh, Hope Trucking Centers bought them out, but they had the, the cheapest bid, and we've had good, good, uh, luck and good experience with them to this point.
Made in Tulsa.
Mm-hmm. Made in Tulsa, yeah. They're in Oklahoma City.
When I first read that, I thought he was gonna buy seventy-one buses, so it looked like, literally, seventy-one buses.
Not more than seven.
That seemed like, that seemed like a lot to me.
Eight thousand, I think.
Yeah.
Not with me here.
Yeah.
We're really looking into the future.
Reservations on it, I mean, go about what you're-
It's the less relative.
Look at, is here, I mean, you're gonna be still-
And that's why we wanted that, because we've got two buses, we're look, you know, some big purchases, we, you know, I won't always look in my checking account, make sure I-
Yeah, so with this, that's almost, what, four hundred thousand dollar buses a year, you know?
Would be two hundred, right?
Right, well, you get six, two-
Oh, with the ones that's not here yet.
About that, 'cause we'll have a twenty-two thousand dollar grant, I'll set, that's very little, but it will set us up.
If you do your other list, there's an eighty thousand dollar vehicle in that, too, so that's four forty.
That's just, that's just, we're not doing that, though.
Yeah.
If we get-
Yeah, that's just a want.
If, uh, if I look at things like the four buses, if we did a, an ag truck, uh, our retention staffing, I may be missing something, but I added up about six hundred fifty-eight thousand, because I wanted to look at our revenue this year compared to last year. If we didn't do all this, where would we be? Would we be back down there with our expenses about where? And that's what we're gonna need to be in about three years, you know, when these grants are gone, if we don't accumulate more grants.
Is there, I mean, is there anything else that would prioritize over this? I mean, is there something that could be, that you could look at and say, well, you know, okay, the bus is number two on the list, but I need, you know, is there something there that you can just, nothing, if this is top of the, the hundred thousand dollars here on this is top of the food chain you're looking at?
Yeah, and for instance, we looked at, uh, we're doing, uh, new curriculum in our computer, computer courses, and I thought that for sure we would need a new lab, it's been there a while. Good thing I have Mike Huggins, and, uh, he went in there, and he come back to me, you know, just like the camera system, he said, yeah, we need that, and that's his area. And so, with the computer lab, he said, I think we can go another year or two, you know, so, uh, you hire good people, and then, you know, trust them to, just, that was his advice on that.
Just out of curiosity, which fund, does this come out of the general fund, the buses come out of the general fund, or?
Yeah, well, yes, yeah, the, a little bit of it's paid out of a grant.
I mean, the, the buses are, I guess, at some point, it's gonna, you're gonna buy it, it's just a matter of when, is, does this bus come with a camera and all that in it, or?
Yes, camera, air conditioning, because they're gonna be activity buses. And we, we have some need in, uh, in our route buses, so it's just that stair step down, moving those current activity to routes and, and keeping these right now for activity on those long trips.
Will we sell or retire two buses?
We'll, we'll retire one, and we have to with a grant, because the grant is to take a, a less, uh, environmentally friendly, uh, bus out of service and replace it with a more efficient one, that's the nature of the grant.
And will the other one, we keep it in service then, or?
Yes, the one is, yeah, we'll take one out of service, so.
Make a motion to use Hope Truck Center to purchase a twenty-twenty-three seventy-one passenger route bus for ninety-eight five seventy.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to, uh, to, uh, allow Hope Truck Center to give us a bid for a seventy-one passenger bus. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes, to purchase.
To purchase, oh, okay, to purchase the seventy-one passenger bus, thank you. Um, Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to action topic H, consideration of light speed web filter alert from the United States for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, and, and this is for me more than anyone, but, uh, when we're talking about firewall or filter, uh, basically, a filter's gonna, uh, be able to block access to certain types of web content coming in, and then firewall, uh, is going to just protect our network and our infrastructure. And, uh, we have a, we have an agreement with the firewall, and it has somewhat of a filter with it, but if you'll read that, this is actually a, a letter or a, uh, typed by Mike, I had him kinda just give us an explanation, and, uh, just briefly, currently, we have a firewall in place that is working great, the product came bundled with a web filter with not much functionality, and, uh, we have been using this filter to block obscene and questionable content, the filter is, uh, failing to- The filter is, uh, failing to block some of the content, which is highly obscene and questionable, and it doesn't cover us when we send the Chromebooks home with students. We also have no way to track the device when it is offsite. So, if we're, we send these things home, and it will, it can track its location too. Uh, the current web filter also does not allow us to audit students' web activity. Uh, the light speed web filter and alerts are designed for K-12 schools and for easy deployment to Chromebooks. This new web fil, web filter will allow Stigler schools to easily, easily block any website, track student activity and location of the device. Because the software is installed directly onto the Chromebooks, it will work when the student takes the device home. This is critical, because any device we send home currently is wide open and without a filter when offsite. Uh, the alert piece from Light Speed monitors each of the student accounts for violence, suicidal, uh, and drug abuse, et cetera. When an alert is seen on a student account, the counselor or principal will be notified to follow up with the student or parent. If it is a severe alert, the counselor or principal will be called. We are at risk of losing our critical E-rate funding without this new filter in place. So, I had him type that up for us.
You know, we had some issue with, uh, grade school kids, when they were on virtual school, being able to look at certain books that were on there that were questionable about. Does this have anything that blocks that type of?
No, I, I don't, I'm gonna say no.
Okay.
Uh, but, that's a, that's gonna be a somewhat different topic. Okay, uh, it's gonna be, that's gonna be similar to, I'm, well, I'm not. I'm gonna allow my grandkids to watch certain things on Netflix.
Mm-mm.
But I'm gonna monitor what they get on there to watch, 'cause there's a lot of stuff on there they don't need to be viewed. But I don't wanna cut them off of it just because of that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna monitor and select what they're gonna watch. And it's, this is, what you're talking about, similar in that it's a, uh, web-based library, basically. It's gonna have things on there that I'm gonna, so me and you wouldn't want our kids reading. I'm gonna have to, as a parent, uh, monitor that.
But it's gonna block YouTube or some other websites that they go to?
Anything on YouTube that's inappropriate.
This would block that.
Right, that's.
But not that on the, any software that we have, as far as we're using with our.
Now, that's a web-based thing too. So, it's gonna go to it, and if it picks up anything obscene.
Yeah, it would block it.
Or inappropriate, you know, it would block it. But I, I would say with the title of a book, I, I wouldn't think so, but I'll ask my, his wisdom on that.
Of course, the location, locating it would be very good, but I'm assuming you'd have to be connected to Wi-Fi to locate anything, though, wouldn't you? If it's not connected.
You'd have to reach internet somehow.
Yeah.
So, I'm not.
So, if they're gonna ditch somewhere, you're probably not gonna locate them, probably, but.
Right. I don't.
I don't know how you would, but.
Right. And really, the, to me, the, uh, we have in a limited way picked up with the filter. We have now, anytime a kid puts anything on that's detrimental to themselves, it picks up on keywords. And, uh, they have, you know, and I don't want to be big brother to anybody, but, uh, this has been beneficial if it's, if they put anything on there dealing with suicidal, it has a way to pick that up, and then that can be brought to the principal, counselor, and then parent if need be, or coun, whoever.
Who watches this?
Uh, Mike does, our IT department, and then if he, if he gets an alert, then he, he sends that out to whoever needs to.
Now, what we have currently, we're not gonna be redoing it, I guess.
Right, I think we.
Lose that cost, and then.
For next year.
Okay, we're gonna lose that cost for next year, so what, what we're paying then, I mean, I'm sure this is thirty...
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. So, I'm sure there's gonna be, whatever we draw, this won't be a full cost of that, correct?
I'm not gonna put a number to it. This is gonna be more expensive for a full year, but it's more effective too, and that's what we're. If you're, if you're not effective, cheap.
Yeah.
And a real good deal.
But the net, the net difference is what you're saying. There's never gonna be an.
Yeah. There will be.
I make a motion to, uh, we use light speed web filter alert for the United syst, from the United Systems for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to use the light speed web filter alert from the United Systems for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to executive session. A proposed executive session to discuss an act upon the following business pursuit to twenty-five Oklahoma statute, three oh seven B one of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of resignation of Ashley Pemberton, Special Ed Teacher's Aid, effective end of twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number two, discussion of retirement of Tina Parsons, Middle School English Teacher, effective end of twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And number three, discussion of adding a second instructor to the ag, uh, education program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Make a motion to be in the executive session.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by Kenny, seven thirty-six P M, to be in the executive session. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Oh, 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 uh. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Oh, 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 uh. Ah, I don't like getting tongue tied.
Make a motion to.
Oh, wait a minute, I gotta do my. I'm sorry.
Like, like.
Okay. All right. Here we go. Here we go.
We're not sure what we're doing.
We're all looking at each other, looking, okay. Members present during executive session were David Huggins, Kenny Witts, and Brett Form, Jennifer Turner was absent. Uh, Superintendent David Morgan was also present. No votes nor motions were taken during executive session. Okay.
Make a motion to, we accept Ashley Pemberton and Tina Parsons' resignations. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to accept the resignation of Ashley Pemberton, Special Ed Teacher's Aid, effective end of twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and retirement of Tina Parsons, Middle School English Teacher, effective, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to approve the addition of a second instructor for the ag, agricultural education program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, who to, um, give, uh, Mr. Morgan the permission to hire a second ag teacher for the twenty-two, twenty-two school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. New business?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I'm gonna hand this, this out.
If you have.
And, uh.
You're welcome.
We, uh, have our MRC working on our roofing at the middle school and high school, and, uh, was called down today to take a look at a couple of things. And, uh, first thing is on our, uh, north annex at the high school. Um, in the original plans that was bid, uh, it bid for that to wrap around three sections of that, but it did not include the back, uh, wall around the back on the annex, north annex at the high school. And we do have some seepage of water through those seams and those blocks, so we need to go ahead and add that to the work they're doing. And, uh, so to complete that, that's twelve thousand four hundred. And then after several times back and forth, uh, between, I think, people, Mr. Pemberton and myself, uh, our architect and, and MRC, uh, we'd originally, when we went up, uh, they're replacing the roof on the, in, on the library portion of the, uh, high school, and they were just gonna overlap that cut and, uh, section it together between that and the main building. But back about three or four weeks ago, uh, we met up on top, and, uh, the owner of MRC recommended we take that one continuous strip all the way to the front to, uh, and then go in, and if you go from the, on that back of that library coming up where it sections into the building, there's a small hump. And I would say that slope's probably about one percent. And so, any humping it at all is gonna, may cause issues. So, when we were up there today, he said, David, in, in good faith, I really don't wanna do this this way. And so, he said, I'll work with you. And so, the original quote, in order to do that the way that they suggested, was about fifty-nine thousand, and he come back today, uh, with a bid of twenty-nine nine. So, uh, we're gonna, and I wanted to take care of this tonight under new business, just, we, we did not have any knowledge of it when we put out the agenda. And, uh, so they could go ahead and get the materials ordered, and they're gonna try to finish up a bulk of this work during spring break. So, uh, being our next regular board meeting's about five weeks away. So, uh, we just propose that we add that, uh, refine legally. Uh, we can do change orders under that bid up to fifteen percent above our original. So, we're well under that. So, uh, we just propose that we add this to it, so that they can complete that project, uh, the best way we can.
Are we doing it the change order, or just, how do you?
This is really down as a proposal, it's a, it's an addition, but I, I checked it. And really, what in the end was the big thing for us is, the original bid we did was for that whole thing, about seven hundred thousand. So, we'd have to get to that plus fifteen before we would have to go back out for bids.
Make a motion to accept the bid from MRC for the proposal for the, uh, high school wall panels and the retrofit roof addition. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to accept the bid from MRC for the proposal with roof on the high school. Um, Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Any other new business?
No, ma'am. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, nine o'clock P M, to adjourn. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Next regular meeting, April the eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.